Welcome to Northview High School as we host tonight's City of Johns Creek City Council Debate. I'm Brian Downey, the proud principal of Northview High School. And on behalf of the four high schools within the great city of Johns Creek, Centennial High School, Chattahoochee High School, Johns Creek High School, and of course, Northview High School. It is our honor to partner with the City and Student Leadership Johns Creek to allow our students to shine while they organize, host, and moderate tonight's event. It makes me especially proud to see that at such an early age, these students are so engaged already and are already paying their civic rent. Speaking of civic rent, it is also my honor to introduce to you someone who is always giving back to our communities. Mr. Roger Wise has been recognized throughout the city, Fulton County, the state, and beyond for his ongoing efforts to support so many. In fact, he has recently received an incredible honor, the Georgia Military Veterans Hall of Fame Award. Only five military veterans. Only five military veterans were accepted this year, and his name and picture will now be permanently placed in the Floyd Building Rotunda across from the state capitol. Here to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please welcome Mr. Roger Wise.
I just thank you, thank you very much for those kind words. I want everybody to please take your seats. Ready, seats! When a sergeant says, "Sit down," you sit down. I want all the veterans and the first responders, on your feet, rise up. We salute you and thank you for your service to our country and thank you for your service to our community. People, freedom is not free. Someone has to pay for it. Safety is not free. Someone has to pay for it. So when you see a veteran, walk up to them and say, "Thank you for your service to our country." When you see a first responder, walk up to them and say, "Thank you for your service to our community." Remembering, freedom is not free and safety is not free. Honoring our veterans and honoring our first responders. As we're here this evening, there's young men and young women all over the world paying their tars so we can be free. As we're here this evening, there's young men and young women in fire stations and police cars, ready to go. When that bell rings, they run to it, they don't run from it. So we must never forget that. Everybody, on your feet! Once a sergeant, always a sergeant. And let's pledge the flag of the greatest country in the world, the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless America.
Good evening. My name is Kalen De Souza. I'm a junior at Chattahoochee High School. And on behalf of the Student Leadership Johns Creek Secretary of State Ambassadors, we welcome you to the 2019 Johns Creek City Council Debate. Thank you all so much for coming out today to listen to the perspectives, views, and ideas of the candidates who wish to represent our amazing city of Johns Creek. First, I'd like to give a big thank you to the Student Leadership of Johns Creek for sponsoring the event and the JCCA for providing the refreshments. Before we begin the evening, we'd like to give a special acknowledgement to State Treasurer Lynn Riley, Atlanta Atlanta Superior Court Judge Rochelle Carnsdale, Fulton County Commissioner Liz Hausman, District 50 House of Representative Angelica Couch, Fulton County Area Superintendent Tim Corrigan, Secretary of State External Affairs Director Kristin Casimir, Secretary of State Ambassadors Coordinator Brandon Mooney, District 95 House of Representative Beth Moore, and Johns Creek Chamber CEO Kent Davies. We are honored to have their support here today. And one final thank you to Ms. Sanders for guiding us through this process and for her dedication and commitment to the city of Johns Creek. This debate is unique in that it is completely student-led, organized, moderated, and timed by the nine Student Leadership Johns Creek Secretary of State Ambassadors, whose mission is to promote civic engagement and voter awareness. They devoted many hours of their time into the making of this event for the community. So let's give a round of applause for the nine ambassadors who helped with the voter registration drive. They helped with the voter registration drive, formulated the questions asked tonight, lights and sound, and more. Now, let me introduce to you the student moderators and candidates before you this evening. The moderator for post two is Ms. Yasmin Shalum, who will be asking Royce Reinike, Dilip Tunki, and Brian Weaver. The moderator for post four is Keon Kermani, whose candidates in post four are Kent Altem, Marybeth Cooper, and Chris Coughlin, and Adam Thomas. The moderator for post six is Ms. Anne Phillip, whose candidates are Erin Elwood, Judy Lefave, and Isher Yang. Our timers tonight are Olivia Schaefer, Lydia Grace Logan, and Tina Dawn. Our videographer is Omid Kalan and Jayla Melvin, who will be assisting with the candidate logistics, including rules. Thank you also to Sherri Song, a member of the 2019 Secretary of State Ambassador Championship Team who has assisted us. The rules for the debate tonight will proceed as follows. The debate will begin with opening statements from all of the candidates. They will each have one minute to explain why they chose to run and what they have done for our exceptional city. Each candidate will then be given a question in which they have one minute to answer. Their opponent will also have one minute to respond to their answer. The original candidate will then have 30 seconds to add additional comments. The candidates running for all three posts will be able to choose their opponent prior to the question being asked. The candidates will not be allowed their phones or outside notes. We have provided them with a notepad and pen. We request that all candidates keep their answers short and concise to keep the debate moving along. At the end of the debate, all candidates will receive one minute for closing statements. We now request that the audience silence their cellphones in order to ensure a focused environment for the candidates. I wish all of you good luck. Let the debate commence.
Hello, my name is Yasmin Shalum, and I'm a junior at Northview High School. I will be moderating post two questions. Candidates from post two will begin with their opening statements. Um, starting with Brian Weaver.
Good evening. I want to thank Northview High School for inviting us to participate in this debate. Also, the Johns Creek Leadership. I am very uniquely qualified to run and be your next city council. And the reason I'm saying that is because I have served in this community for over 30 years. Before Johns Creek became a city, I was working in this area as a Fulton County Police Officer. And I rose up through the ranks where I was a senior commander here in Johns Creek. And after I retired from Fulton, Johns Creek became a city. I helped sit in on some of those meetings. I was involved with those meetings with Liz, Damon Cave, and your first city council people. But I am very uniquely qualified. I want to serve. Serving is in my DNA. And my best ability is my availability. I would always be around. I would always be available to meet and to answer any questions. Thank you.
Next is candidate Dilip Tunki.
Good evening. Dilip Tunki, proud resident of Johns Creek for almost two decades. I'm here with my lovely wife Padma. We are married for 23 years and together we have a daughter Sindhu. Professionally, I'm a small business executive with over 27 years of experience in engineering and finance. I'm a decent graduate from our Leadership Johns Creek Program and also graduated from Citizens Fire Academy and Citizens Police Academy. I served on the Johns Creek Construction Board of Appeals. I also served on Chattahoochee High School Governance Council for three years as a budget chair. We brought a greenhouse to the school. We chose Johns Creek as our home for two reasons. Schools and a warm place to raise family and build character. Moving forward, I will do everything to preserve that within Johns Creek. Thank you.
Next is candidate Royce Reinike.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out tonight to learn about all the candidates who are running for city council. I'm a longtime resident of the Johns Creek area. My wife and I moved here in 1979 and raised our daughters in the Johns Creek area. For the past 10 years, I've developed an interest in our city government and have been participating extensively with city council meetings, developing the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, the Parks Plan. I've provided a lot of input that has been well-received by council and led to positive action. I am running to help improve the effectiveness of our city government that is focused on our priorities of our schools, our public safety, and our home values. Our concerns about traffic, zoning, parks, arts, business, all tie back to those priorities. And I hope you will all study the information on my website and my Facebook page. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Keon Kermani, and I'm a senior of Johns Creek High School, and I will be moderating the post four questions. All right, candidates from post four will start with their opening statements. First off is candidate Thomas.
Thank you. Irene, thank you, as Ms. Sanders is known, for your leadership and pouring into these students. Thank you, students, and congratulations on your big win that you had last year. A little bit about me, I bring real-world experience, I believe, to the city council. And I've been advising clients in the financial services business for about 25 years. And I provide advice and comprehensive planning to more than 200 families, high-net worth, high-profile families. Two of my biggest supporters are here tonight, maybe my two biggest fans, maybe my only two votes, my wife Courtney and my daughter Tessa, who's learning about politics. And here's what I want you to know. There's a couple of questions that you need to understand tonight. Besides taxes, which I want to keep low, besides traffic, which we have to fix, there's three questions that we need to, I think, sit back and, as you listen tonight, ask yourself. Number one, how do we keep government accountable? Number two, how do we grow responsibly? And number three, how do we enhance public safety and quality of life?
Thank you, candidate.
Good evening, Johns Creek. My name is Chris Coughlin. I'm your incumbent in post four. You all elected me in April of 2017 to address issues like fiscal responsibility, government efficiency, using novel technology-based solutions for traffic, strong resident zoning, and preserving our quality of life by protecting our schools and our parks. I do believe I have brought a data-first, science-first perspective to legislative policy, being a scientist by trade. And over the past couple of years, my initiatives, while either being supported unanimously or nearly unanimously, have brought in millions of extra dollars in revenue every year while actually lowering taxes and improving our level of service. So I would like to continue that and serve you all for another four years.
Good evening. My name is Kent Altem. I'm here tonight with my wife Charlotte and our daughter Carly. Charlotte's taught in one of our Johns Creek elementary schools. Carly's attended, including preschool, four of our schools here in Johns Creek. We love this city. I'm grateful tonight for everyone who have played a part in hosting this event. My thoughts about running for city council can be traced back to a conversation I had last spring with a friend that's in another municipality, a city employee. In the conversation, I said, "Bob, how are things here in your city?" He said, "Well, Kent, we get sideways with each other every once in a while, but we ask ourselves, tell each other, at least we're not Johns Creek." That's an indictment. The more I talked to people, I was reminded of my parents, who taught me, that said, "Get up every morning and ask yourself, how can I serve others?"
Thank you so much. We need to move on now.
Finally, we have candidate Cooper.
Good evening. My name is Marybeth Cooper. Been a resident of Johns Creek for 11 years. I got transferred back here from Birmingham and grew up here, went to school in East Cobb. Grew up in the north side of the city, remember when, you know, the Fina gas station was here. I'm here tonight with two surrogate moms that have known me almost all my life and my young son, who is learning about politics and is the best campaign manager a mom could have. For the past eight years, I've been involved with my HOA, serving as president, vice president. I joined the Johns Creek Community Association in 2017 as the zoning chair. Got involved with zoning because something was coming near me, and I was like, "Wait, this doesn't make sense." And I needed help, reached out to the JCCA, as many do. Past year, I've been president, resigned to run for city council. I think we need to change. I think we need to move forward. I think our city's stagnating. I appreciate your vote and I thank you for your time tonight.
Hello, my name is Anne Phillip, and I'm a senior at Northview High School, and I will be moderating the post six questions. For our opening statements, we will start off with candidate Erin Elwood.
Hello. Hello. I have lived in Johns Creek for five years. The first couple of years were a sleep-deprived blur. I'm sure many of you here are familiar with the happy chaos that is raising your first child as an infant. The last few years, however, I have become actively engaged in community outreach, primarily through voter education and grassroots efforts. And in these last few years, I have knocked the doors of literally thousands of Johns Creek voters. That's not exaggeration, literally thousands. And I have stood on the doorstep, speaking face-to-face with voters about the issues that matter to them. I've done this work in all 19 voting precincts. And what I have learned is that there is an appetite in this city, that there's absolutely an appetite in this city for a community-focused governance, by which I mean a city council that supports parks and recreation, promotes arts and culture, builds the city center that we've been promised, and does all of this while protecting the environment that is our shared home. I'm instructed by the city's past, but I'm centered on the city's future. Thank you.
Next, we have candidate Isher Yang.
Hi, and thank you all for sponsoring this. I am a longtime resident of Johns Creek. I have been here for almost 30 years. My parents are here, my kids are here. I've raised my kids here. I am a single parent for almost over 17 years. But during that time, I've also been a small-business owner, a property manager. I've also been a corporate division head. And I've been very active in my kids' activities. The breadth of my experience gives me the background and the know-how and the ability to work well with others while representing you, the residents. I want to bring smart traffic solutions. I want to help improve businesses. I want to preserve our community. And I also want to give you a voice in representation and decision-making when it comes to T-Swabs, city center, parks, development, taxes.
Thank you so much. And last, we have candidate Judy Lefave.
Good evening, and thank you all for being here this evening. I greatly appreciate it, and I know that this is quite the undertaking. My name is Judy Lefave, and I've lived here for 22 years with my husband Kevin. We've raised our two sons, Nathan and Peter, here. And my journey this evening started, let's just say, when my HOA had somebody in our backyard wanting to do rezoning. And so through that, my HOA said, "Yeah, let's nominate you to the Johns Creek Community Association," and off I ran. After that first year, the board voted and made me president. And during that time, through great board members, and I see a few of you in the audience this evening, we grew the membership to over 13,000 homes, representing over 75 neighborhoods throughout the city. So I am very passionate about this city, and I am a passionate servant leader. Thank you.
We'll now begin with post two questions. Candidate Weaver, before you get your question, who would you like to rebut? Your question is, "As council, how would you deal with the competing interests of residents, business owners, and developers when reviewing land use petition requests such as rezoning and/or special use permits?" He's asking if you can repeat the question, please. "As a councilman, how would you deal with the competing interests of residents, business owners, and developers when reviewing land use petition requests such as rezoning and/or special use permits?"
Well, well, first of all, I would get the information from staff that have recommended, most of the time. In all those cases, you have done, staff has done their homework. You'll get whatever type of study is needed, whether it's tree study, topography study, or whatever that's needed. Those recommend engineering report. I get all that information and assess it. And then, once I assess the information, I'll see if there are neighborhood concerns that need to be addressed, and maybe hold a town hall meeting, and gather all the information before I make a good decision. That's part of my background. That's what we did in police work, making good decisions. But after we got all the facts, after we got all the information, so we can make sure we're making the best interest for the community. Thank you.
Candidate Tunki, once again, the question is, "As a councilman, how would you deal with the competing interests of residents, business owners, and developers when reviewing land use petition requests such as rezoning and/or special use permits?"
Thank you. Good question. Going back to what Brian said. If there's a request that comes in from business owners and the residents, we've got to go back and look at how we can benefit both. We need to balance between what the request that comes from the residents and from the business owners. If you go back and look at the shopping centers around Johns Creek, some of them are half-empty, and if you're going to leave them like that, they're going to go completely dead. So if you have to go back and work with the business owners, landlords, and also address the residents' concern, we should be able to do that one. So if you have to do a balance out between those things, Brian, how would you balance it out? Which would you weigh more, like towards the business or the residents?
Candidate Weaver, you have 30 seconds to rebut what your opponent just said.
Well, first of all, like I said, once I get all the information and meet with both the business and also the residents to try to find out what impact it would have on the city, whether it's negative or positive. And once I gather all the information, we'll see what the best interest is and how it would benefit the city and whether or not it follows the guidelines that are already in place in the comp plan and the zoning procedures.
Candidate Tunki, before you get your question, who would you like to rebut?
I'll go back to Brian.
Your question is, "Local residents were concerned about two housing problems in the city of Johns Creek. One relates to workforce housing, the other to evictions of single mothers and their children. What would you do to create more housing for minimum-wage earners who could work in our local minimum-wage businesses? And what would you do to ease the problem of single mothers being evicted because their wages do not keep pace with rising housing costs?" Could you please repeat the question? "Local residents were concerned about two housing problems in the city of Johns Creek. One relates to workforce housing, the other to evictions of single mothers and their children. What would you do to create more housings for minimum-wage earners who could work in our local minimum-wage businesses? And what would you do to ease with the problem of single mothers being evicted because their wages do not keep pace with rising housing costs?"
Thank you for the question. The same question came out when I was going door-to-door to the businesses too. They came back and said, "How would you address the situation of getting the workforce?" So there are two ways to look at that one. If you go back and follow the comp plan, land use plan, they specified a few areas where it's like the, based on the traffic intersections and the density, they classified a few areas where the high-density houses can be built. So the only way we could, based on the land cost, the only way we could get the low-cost housing would be increase the density. So we should be able to go back and do it in the areas where it's not going to impact the traffic. Similarly, we need to work on something like a mode of transportation for them. So right now, like, most of the single moms, like, they cannot afford both, like the house and the transportation. So we should work something towards on the transportation too. Thank you.
Candidate Weaver, once again, the question is, "Local residents were concerned about two housing problems in the city of Johns Creek. One relates to workforce housing."
Because of trauma. A lot of that comes
Because of trauma, a lot of that comes from the medical profession treating people with opioids, and we need to work with doctors to make sure that we don't over-prescribe opioids to people who are suffering from pain, things of that nature. The third group is going to be people who just like to use drugs because they enjoy an altered state. I'm not sure we can do much in that community, except recognize that there are some people who want to do that, and that's where we are.
Candidate Weaver, once again, the question is, how can Johns Creek transition away from being in the drug triangle, a drug hotspot across Johns Creek, Alpharetta, and Sandy Springs? What should be done about the growing opioid crisis?
That's a good question. I can tell you what we did with Johns Creek Police. We actually had a, this was an epidemic from the, they called it from the city to the suburbs. It was an issue with not only opioids, but heroin. And what we did, we sat down with our partners locally, Santa Springs, Alpharetta, Roswell, and Forsyth, identified those areas, and then we created a task force. We got everybody to pitch in, and that's part of my experience, knowing that funding is always going to be an issue as far as budgeting if you're not funding properly. But collaboration and cooperation, you've got to have that. And with my experience over the years, I've already built those bridges with federal, state, and local partnerships, so I know exactly what needs to be done. We identified the problem, and we attacked the problem, and I think we've all, we pretty much got it under control now. Thank you.
To attract, attack dealers and drug distributors. But I also believe that there's an important component to this program, which is preventive program. And what are we doing to help people who suffer from loss of purpose? What programs are we giving people so that they won't turn to drugs? What are we doing with our medical profession so that they don't over-prescribe drugs? And then we've got to be careful about what we do with the people who want to enjoy an altered state, as to whether we really want to turn into criminals or not.
Now, for post-four. Candidate Thomas, before you answer the first question, who would you like to rebut? I should ask Brian Weaver, because that's what everybody else is doing. But I'm going to select Ken Altam. Candidate Thomas, your question is, would you support a transit option in Johns Creek that includes bus rapid transit routes which operate in dense lanes, or arterial rapid transit routes which operate in existing lanes but have traffic signal priority?
It's a good question. It goes back to one of the things that I started off with in the beginning, which is, how do we in Johns Creek grow responsibly? We all know that there is a massive traffic issue. We are considered a pass-through community, people coming from Forsyth County, down through our community to Gwinnett and other places. And I think one of those things that needs to be addressed is how do we direct the resources that we have, both from a local government and a state government, moving forward? And those are the things that we need to decide on.
Okay. Next, candidate Altam. Once again, the question is, would you support a transit option in Johns Creek that includes bus rapid transit routes which operate in dedicated lanes, or arterial rapid transit routes which operate in existing lanes but have traffic signal priority?
Transportation needs to be a top priority. In Atlanta, we love our cars. You'll know that as you drive and sit in traffic, more often sitting than driving, and you look and there's just one driver, no passengers in their cars. I would not support busing and dedicated lanes until we have a comprehensive regional transportation plan. What we need in Johns Creek is business development that brings opportunity where people want to work here, live here, and play here. If we did that, there would be less need for connection between Marta and Johns Creek. I do understand that people are looking for jobs, our economy's well. What we need to do is focus on the $40 million that's been collected through T-Slot that our city council can't even move from the planning stage to the engineering stage.
Candidate Thomas, you now have 30 seconds for any additional comments.
Ken, I completely agree with you. We've got a lot of money that's been given to the city, and what I don't understand in the last emergency budget meeting is just that. We've taken $500,000 that GDOT has given to us, and we have not even moved forward. All we're doing is kicking the can down the road. So when do we start acting, rather than just planning? Thank you.
Next, for Councilman Coughlin, before you answer the first question, who would you like to rebut?
We'll pick Mr. Thomas. I'll spread my love, though. I'll keep it easy.
Councilman Coughlin, your question is, as you've heard in the news, the Sterigenics Plant in Smyrna and the BD Bard Plant in Covington are two companies that have created environmental concerns for their communities. How will you ensure that businesses in Johns Creek like those abide by federal, state, and local air quality regulations and laws?
That's a great question. So I led the initiative when we acquired our new city hall. I brought in Southface, it's a regional residential sustainability company to do an energy audit, to really look at the thumbprint of what we use at that city hall. For a very nominal fee, they were able to evaluate our energy use and give us suggestions of how we make it very sustainable. And with that, not only do we lower our energy output, but we also save a lot of money on maintenance and operations. I'm also--
Taxation issues, issues of imminent domain and condemnation, tax, property tax issue under one umbrella, so that we don't have this patchwork of bureaucracy, and we can attack, we can attack all property issues with a unified front.
Councilman Coughlin, you now have one minute to rebut.
Could you repeat the question?
Yeah, sorry. And the question is, as you've heard in city council meetings in the past year, the repair of stormwater facilities has been a major issue facing the city of Johns Creek, but it's an expense that cannot be met with just tax revenue. How would you propose funding for stormwater repairs and improvements?
Well, the good news, folks, is that it likely could be met with tax revenue. We've actually put aside about $4 million, and then we just dedicated 1.8 million to an actual assessment of all of the basins within Johns Creek, and also with Lowe's engineers, and then they're going to bring back data-driven evidence of how we address the issue. So we continue to drive surplus every year. I think it will be feasible that, some estimate it's on the lower end of around $5 million, some say up to $15 million, but with $4 million already set aside, we continue to make those investments into stormwater. I think we can take the hit, and then really, the key would be the plan for maintenance and operations. We can make those upfront capital and infrastructure costs of, you know, $10 million, say that's what the number comes in. But also, I want to thank Representative Kausch, because she's also helped us identify grants from the state level, and then also with the feds, and worked with the ARC to help with some of those funding gaps. So I think we can make those gaps in funding up.
Candidate Altam, you now have 30 seconds for any additional comments.
We benefit from feasibility studies. The problem with our city council, our current city council, is that one faction is pro-growth, the other faction is no-growth. What we need is a city council person, more, I'll take the help if I can get it, that are in favor of sensible growth, that doesn't pay for these studies, and then wait, and wait, and wait, and the cost of them, the studies become stale, and then we need to get them redone because the costs go up and up and up. That's not saving our city money, that's costing them.
Next, for candidate Cooper, before you answer the first question, who would you like to rebut?
Numbers, anyone? I will ask candidate Altam, please.
All right. Your question is, what is the city's role in developing and funding a performing arts center in Johns Creek?
So, there's been a lot of talk about an arts center in Johns Creek, and I had a conversation this week about an arts center over email, had a conversation face-to-face with someone too. We need a center to draw the talent that is within our city. We can see that talent here tonight in these students. I think where people balk sometimes is they hear arts, and they go, oh, that's, you know, music and theater, okay, that's, I, that's good, but, you know, my kid's into this, I want my kid to be in science and technology. You know what? We call it a steam center, because the lights here need an engineer to know how to get them to work, so they hit the spots in the right time. That sound booth back there takes engineering, it takes math, it takes all of them. And if we do those all together, together, we can put together a public-private partnership like we have with many of our parks in this city. City doesn't have the funds for it. Funds can be raised privately for the capital endowment. We can do this all together, or we can do it apart.
Candidate Altam, once again, the question is, what's the city's role in developing and funding a performing arts center in Johns Creek?
The arts in the city represent the vibrancy of that community. I'm not a huge arts person, but I'll tell you, it's not about what I want, it's about what this community needs, and I support an arts center. My family has benefited from different arts programs in our city, and we need that visual center where people can see that we are committed to the arts. Do you know how much money our city council has to fund arts in its budget? We're not talking about the pass-through expense for the symphony concert this Saturday night, $12,000 that it costs for the event. We're talking about to underwrite the arts in the city. You know how much? Zero, not a dime. If it's something this city values, we don't need to look always to private and to grants. We need to save. Our money shows what we support.
Candidate Cooper, you now have 30 seconds for any additional comments.
So again, I don't want kids to, if you don't know, there's a free Johns Creek Symphony Concert this weekend on Saturday at the Mark Burk Culture Amphitheater at Newtown Park. I encourage you to attend. I'll be there. I always like to listen to music. Also, it makes me really happy, and it lets me sit down for 10 minutes. You know, the city needs to do a lot of things. We have been pushed to make our budget lean. The city council made some decisions this year I didn't agree with. One of them was rolling back a millage rate. We've got to fix it. Thank you.
Candidate Elwood, before you answer the first question, who would you like to rebut?
I think I'll just go down the line. Sorry, Asher.
Candidate Elwood. Currently, Johns Creek has a booming older population, but a small portion of millennials. How would we attract millennials to Johns Creek?
I know, I just saw you pick that out of a hat, but that's like my passion. I'm a millennial, and I'm 35 years old, and millennials are old now, you guys. We have mortgages, we have kids, we have 529 plans, and we are trying to make the best decisions that we can for our family. I have to tell you that as much as I live Johns Creek, and I plan this to be my home for the next 30 years, on Facebook and on boards, when people, moms are asking other moms, where would you move in Georgia, Johns Creek is not at the top of the list. And that is partly because our city does not value parks and recreation. We have, what, 4.99 acres per 1,000 residents, and the average is 9.6? So, you know, we're a great city, but we are really behind when it comes to parks. We're behind when it comes to recreation. I live in Rivermont, fortunately close to Roswell, and I pay to take my son to Roswell Recreation because they have great programs. We also don't promote arts and culture as much as we should, which is something that's healthy for our community. And finally, the city center that would have-- I have to stop. Thank you.
Candidate Yang, once again, the question is, currently Johns Creek has a booming older population, but a small portion of millennials. How would we attract millennials to Johns Creek?
I actually agree with you, Hannah. We too need to encourage more parks, more arts and culture, more, more, more quality life. You know, we don't have, we're, one of the things that we lack in, when I go walk and knock on these doors, people go, why do we have more places to eat, to play, to work, to enjoy? And that's one of the things that we need to build on. It's businesses, it's encouraging and promoting businesses, it's encouraging and promoting arts, it's encouraging and promoting parks, and making sure that we do it right. And also, one of the things that we need to work on is creating a vision. Well, let's just don't talk about it, let's actually create a vision and go and work towards that goal.
Candidate Elwood, you now have 30 seconds for any additional comments.
So I think we're in agreement, and one thing I would piggyback up off of Asher on is that, is the action. We have a city council that, in my opinion, has been crippled by indecision. They're pretty afraid of upsetting some residents in the city, and they have been against development of any kind. And I'm not saying let's build Avalon up in here, but, you know, a city center that would encourage millennials to move here, where they could take their children and have a meal, and the kids play on the lawn. I mean, that sounds lovely, and I don't understand why that hasn't happened yet.
Candidate Yang, before you answer your question, who would you like to rebut?
Oh, I guess I'll go down the line, and I will go to Judy.
Candidate Yang, are the city's zoning regulations equipped to transform the city into a vibrant community? What would be some of the policies that you would promote to expand recreational and cultural activities in Johns Creek?
Could you repeat that question for me, please?
Yes, of course. Are the city's zoning regulations equipped to transform the city into a vibrant community? What would be some of the policies that you would promote to expand recreational and cultural activities in Johns Creek?
So right now, in the comp plan, we actually have city center, we have parks, we have, you know, some of the things that we also are lacking that we have in our comp plan is, are also just connecting our sidewalks. I mean, those are simple things that we can do. Zoning is related to comp plan, so our zoning, you know, right now, our community will need to grow, but we want a planned growth. We need a, we need to think about our vision and plan it appropriately. We don't want this over-development without plan, vision. Again, we already have a lot of that in our comp plan, so I would like for us to continue growing on that and building on it.
Candidate Lefebvre, once again, the question is, are the city's zoning regulations equipped to transform the city into a vibrant community? What would be some of the policies that you would promote to expand recreational and cultural activities in Johns Creek?
As the comp plan stands alone, we're missing some components. We've just had revised, the ordinances are aligned, that's great. What we need to look forward to is a master plan that takes in zoning, transportation, that would address some of the trail and connectivity issues to keep us vibrant, to move us forward. You know, it does address the parks, it's all there. But the master plan takes, like I said, the zoning, the infrastructure, the traffic, stormwater management, and that's what we need to do to stay vibrant.
Candidate Yang, you now have 30 seconds for any additional comments.
I agree, we do need to stay-- I agree, we do need to stay vibrant. And we do want to encourage a master plan, a vision. That's what we have to do to ensure that we do it right. A lot of times in Johns Creek lately, we just haven't had a vision which hasn't kept us focused. And we need to be focused and create that vision for us. One of the things, like I said, is, you know, we need our parks, we need to finalize everything that we've decided to do. We made that decision in our comp plan. We want our parks, we want our arts center, we want... To stop, sorry.
Kennedy LeFay, before you answer your first question, who would you like to rebut? Kennedy LeFay, what role should the city play in economic development? Should the city's role be limited or expanded in this area? Explain why or why not.
That's a great question. Two years ago, the city had a strategic economic development plan put together. And I think the city's been caught up in too many details on many other things to not really put forth that plan and that vision. Through zoning, we have Tech Park, that's a vast area that needs to be improved. It's so outdated in the building and the technology that's there. That's a great place to look for businesses to come in. We've talked amongst ourselves sometimes about an incubator where small businesses can come in. But I also see a need that we can do more, because we have Emory Johns Creek, why not look at medical incubators where we look at robotics technology for surgeries? Thank you.
Kennedy Yang, once again, the question is, what role should the city play in economic development? And should the city's role be limited or expanded in this area?
One of the things that Peshaw corner says is they do have an incubator and so does Georgia Tech. And actually, it's a project that they do at Georgia Tech. And they bring in new businesses, they bring in new ideas, innovations. And that would be a great idea for someone to do. We, a lot of times, the government or local municipality has very limited ability to bring that in. But we can bring in private entities that can help bring the innovation, the solutions, the ideas that can make and help Johns Creek and also bring development to Johns Creek. So those are some of the things that I would probably do is to encourage private entities to come in and do an incubator to help with the development and to help with bringing innovation to Johns Creek.
Kennedy LeFay, you now have 30 seconds for any additional comments.
Right. So the government's role in that would be to ensure that the way we tax businesses is set up properly. You can't, you know, say, yes, we want business, yes, we want business, and then tax the snot out of them. That's not going to work. Businesses don't want to come here if you're going to hit them every turnaround. We need to have that great environment. The chamber does great work to bring businesses together, to bring people together and bring people out so we know what's going on in our city for business. Thank you.
We'll go down the line of candidates again, but since we're short on time, candidates will have one minute to respond to questions. However, opponents will only have 30 seconds to rebut with no additional comments after. So, candidate Weaver, before you get your question, who would you like to rebut? Your question is, does zoning regulation of the city help to attract businesses and other economic opportunities? What initiatives are you considering to expand economic opportunities for future generations within the city?
Well, what the city has in place now, like Judy said, has been revised. And that has been revised to connect the dots. There was a lot of things that were missing that needed to be updated or replaced. So now that has been done and it's up to the city to try to attract businesses to the city by using initiatives such as what Governor Kemp has. He has an initiative in place to attract small businesses. We should try to use some of that, some of those initiatives, try to attract business to the city to help Johns Creek out and also new companies, energy companies or companies that can develop here in Johns Creek and not only be an asset to the community, but also help develop some of their employees and to help the city be more viable. What was the second one?
Candidate Tunkey, once again. Once again, the question is, does zoning regulation of the city help to attract businesses and other economic opportunities? What initiatives are you considering to expand economic opportunities for future generations within the city? You have 30 seconds to respond.
Thank you. That's a good question for economic development. The recent zoning updates based on the comp plan were done. So even without changing anything to the zoning, we can go back and use existing space. Like the Technology Park, we have a lot of empty office space and the empty shopping centers. We don't need to do anything for the zoning to attract the new business in the current scenario. Just go back and make Johns Creek business friendly. Give them some initiatives like adding the arts and center, increasing the green space. That would definitely go back and attract the millennials. We need to go back and nurture that age group, millennials. So, thank you.
Candidate Tunkey, before you get your question, who would you like to rebut?
I'm going to go back to Brian.
Your question is, Johns Creek is generally made up of expensive housing and many of our local businesses are losing employees as affordable housing is not an option. Would you support implementing any sort of affordable housing in the city of Johns Creek? If so, how? If not, why not?
Thank you. That's a good question. Goes back to the same discussion we had earlier on economic development. We definitely need the affordable housing. The businesses I'm talking to, they're coming back with the same question, saying, I know the houses are pretty expensive. That's because of the land values. So if we have to increase the density of the houses based on the comp plan, there are some areas in the Johns Creek that we could go back and build affordable housing at a more density. So once we do that one, we would have more talent pool, at least the businesses would have the people to work on. The second part to that one is like if all the candidates were talking about the transportation. We need to look at that aspect too. So first focus on the housing, which we can do it based on the comp plan and the zoning regulations and the density. We can definitely do that without making any changes to either the comp plan or the zoning. Thank you.
Candidate Weaver, once again, the question is, Johns Creek is generally made up of expensive housing and many of our local businesses are losing employees as affordable housing is not an option. Would you support implementing any sort of affordable housing in the city of Johns Creek? If so, how? If not, why not? You have 30 seconds to respond.
Well, again, I agree with what Dylan said, zoning is based on density. We also can look at what other cities are doing and look at our neighbors. Look at Roswell, look at Alpharetta, see what they're doing. And just present it to the city staff and see what areas are being identified here at Johns Creek that we're not taking advantage of, that's vacant, that we're not using now. And just see how valuable that would be for the city in order to attract different corporations and different businesses.
Thank you. Candidate Ronnie Key, before you get your question, who would you like to rebut?
Mr. Tunkey.
Your question is, how do you think people outside of Johns Creek view our city? And what would you do to enhance or change their opinion?
Well, I think people outside of Johns Creek see this as the greatest place to live in Georgia. I mean, we've been recognized as the best place to live in Georgia. So let's keep the good thing going, okay? We're known for our schools, we're known for our public safety, we're known for our housing, and we're known for our quality of life here. This is a great place. Let's not put Johns Creek down, okay? Hey, people want to live in Johns Creek. What I want to do is just deliver on what we have already come up with as a city on projects to continue to improve. We need to work on our parks, we need to maintain the facilities that we built, we need to work on our transportation issues. Those are not, you know, the end of the world things. Those are things we just need to continue to work on. You know, as the world keeps moving forward, we need to continue to move and grow as the economy grows. Thank you.
Candidate Tunkey, once again, the question is, how do you think people outside of Johns Creek view our city? And what would you do to enhance or change their opinion?
Again, a good question, but going back to the discussion, what Kent Altum said. Outside is not being viewed very high. There are a couple of reasons. Right now, we are ranked number three in the safety and all the aspects. We're the best place to live. That's one of the reasons why I got my family in here. But we just can't base everything on the current. We need to prepare for the tomorrow, future. We need to go back and nurture the millennials, give them a reason to move back. If you go back and ask our kids, or our grandkids, would you move back? We need to give them a reason to say yes.
Thank you.
Now for post four. Candidate Thomas, who would you like to rebut?
I'll rebut Chris.
All right. Your question is, the Medlock Bridge and State Bridge Road intersection is an important section of the T-Sloss project. A number of different alternatives have been proposed. And what solution do you support?
Well, if anybody watched the debate a month or so ago and they talked about different lanes and widths and things like that, I think what that did is, you know, we've been given a bunch of money by Georgia DOT. And I think the only way that we can continue to have a good relationship with the Georgia DOT is to move projects forward in which money they entrusted us to use. We know that we have a traffic problem here. We're not going to improve everybody's situation, but that is one place that we have to improve. And the current city council has twice pushed away a $500,000 project to start. And how long have we continued to kick this can down the road? I'm concerned that projects going forward, roads being made, widening, projects being done only cost more as we go down the road. In order to save money, we've got to continue to act now.
Councilman Coughlin, again, the question is, the Medlock Bridge and State Bridge Road intersection is an important section of the T-Sloss project. A number of different alternatives have been proposed. And what solution do you support?
Um, yes, so I was responsible for the initiative to move that concrete island to the right going southbound. And right now, that's producing 45 seconds in saving for over 20,000 people every day. So it's really letting the data drive us. There's actually five options. There's the bridge, a hybrid use, a mixed use, a through you, and a continuous flow at intersection. Really, it's between the through you and the continuous flow intersection. I would really support the continuous flow intersection at two lanes. It has the best performance and one of the best costs and it should handle congestion for 30 to 40 years.
All right, yeah. Now for Councilman Coughlin, who would you like to rebut?
I'll take Mr. Altum. Or he'll rebut me.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, got you.
Your question is, what do you personally think the biggest issue facing Johns Creek is and why? What would be your approach to solving this issue? And what means do you think that would work?
So we had a 2019 community survey. The methodology was pretty sound, the sampling error was fairly low. So we know with a fairly high picture of confidence of what the two major issues are in traffic and development. I think on traffic, I have a number of issues with the intersection prioritization list, like adding left-hand turn lanes to improve operational and mobility issues. A light timing initiative, that was one of my things that I led on. I'm working with the ATL board, the technology rep, Professor Dickerson from Georgia Tech. He invented the IP that Lyft and Uber use for some technology advanced solutions coming up and pursuing multimodal lanes. And in regards to development, we just passed the 2018 comprehensive land use plan. It's pretty sound. And if you look at my zoning record, it's very, very good.
Candidate Altum, once again, the question is, what do you think is the biggest issue facing Johns Creek and why? What would be your approach to solving this issue and what means would this work?
First, I'll echo, I love this city. That's why I commute three and four times a week, 26 miles each way to work. I love Johns Creek. The biggest issues that we have are not too big for us, but they're too big for your current city council. These factions on our city council do not like one another. There are people on our city council more worried about whether they have a lane to... If you believe the best days for Johns Creek are ahead of us, if you believe that this stagnation that's set in in our city council needs to be changed, you need three new city council members this year and you need three new city council members in 2021. I would appreciate your vote.
All right. Uh, Kennedy Cooper, again, question is, in the latest city council meetings, some council members appear to be focused on their own personal legacy, creating controversies and disagreements. How will you work with other elected officials to better service this city?
That's exactly why I'm up here. Exactly why I'm up here. We have a divisive city council. I think everybody in this room pays attention to it and knows it. When you cannot work together, when you withhold information from people on the council so they can't share it before you can, so you can get the golden nugget and whatever you want, that's not the best thing. You don't hide things from your coworkers and the people you're supposed to work with. That's the wrong way. Do it right.
Uh, and next for candidate Cooper. Who would you like to rebut?
Councilmember Coughlin.
How would you create a better balance between commercial and residential tax rates?
It's a great question. Did anybody in here know we have a commercial tax rate? Our businesses are taxed heavily. But the biggest thing is, people don't realize, the biggest driver of our city's revenue at 38% is our sales tax. It's not our property tax. And if we drive away businesses by overtaxing and overregulation, we're hurting ourselves. All we're going to do is slice off our Achilles because we can't run anymore. So what we have to do is balance it. We need to have rates comparable or better than some of our cities. For a big business to come in, we need to do some incentives. There's a reason that that works. There's a reason Cobb County, we've got SunTrust Park. There's a reason that things happen in other cities and we go, why did that happen there? Why could, we had this, why can't it happen here? It can happen here. We just need people who are willing to make a decision, vote on it, and stand behind it. Thank you.
Councilman Coughlin, your... Councilman Coughlin, your question, oh, here we go. All right. How would you create a better balance between commercial and residential tax rates?
So I tried to work on reducing occupational taxes. It's not a large driver of our revenue. It wouldn't be a large impact to the city, and it'll also encourage further business investment. It's actually, it's not so much the split versus commercial and residential revenue that's the issue, it's actually amongst the commercial businesses. We actually place a very high burden on your small businesses, your work-from-home businesses. And with the revisions to the occupational tax, thank you.
And now for post six. Candidate Elwood, before you answer your second question, who would you like to rebut?
I think we'll just go down the line again. Thank you.
And your question is, the council recently set a mileage rate that decreases property tax revenue by approximately $2 million. John's Creek budget, the John's Creek budget is unique in that 50% of the operating expense is attributed to the police and fire departments, and 74% of the total personnel cost is attributed to police and fire. Assuming you will not cut the public safety budget, where would you cut $2 million from the expenses?
So I watched the budget meeting where they voted on the military rate cut. Then I watched the following work session where it was revealed to the city council members that the military rate had been cut too far for the budget that had been presented to actually be passed. And so they had to do that. They had to sit and cut $2 million. I was very concerned by the fact, by the chain of events. Why was the military cut when it was going to result in that? Now, it's because there was a reserve, and it just meant that they were relying on the reserve for the following year, so I'm not explaining it very well. It's complicated math. But the point is, is that our city council members made a vote, not understanding, in my opinion, what really was happening, and that was very concerning to me. And watching them cut those things, well, you want to know what I would cut? That would be a very difficult question, and I think I would need to sit for several hours with the budget book the way the council members did, and go line by line and figure out what we could do that year.
Candidate Yang, once again, the question is, the council recently set a mileage rate that decreases property tax revenue by approximately $2 million. John's Creek budget is unique in that 50% of the operating expense is attributed to the police and fire departments, and 74% of the total personnel cost is attributed to police and fire. Assuming you will not cut the public safety budget, where would you cut $2 million from the expenses?
From what I understand was, the $2 million, one was from reserve, and one was from the fact that we did not, we were on budget, so we did not need the $1 million, and that's where the $2 million came from. I know that we felt like it was a little bit, a bit of a tight $2 million, but again, it's something that we have, we actually believe we have $4 million in reserve. So it's not like we don't have the money to cover it.
Candidate Yang, before you answer your second question, who would you like to rebut?
I'm going to go back to Erin, only because I already did Judy.
All right, and your question is, how would you improve the engagement of our residents in the decision-making process?
How would I, how would I improve the engagement? Well, I want us to be open and honest and transparent. I think that's one of the things I talk about a lot. One of the things also is the fact that we don't have, we don't have true transparency. So a lot of times, our residents are having to do Freedom of Information Acts to pull information just to figure out what is going on with special projects. And I would like that information to be pushed out prior to, so that our residents don't have to look for it. You know, the Medlock Bridge widening, I'm sorry, the narrowing of the lanes is one that is a prime example that is recent, that people can refer to, is we had a resident who pulled a FOIA on it and realized that then we had, they were actually going to narrow lanes. And then it came back to us that it was for traffic calming reasons, and then the real reason came back to us that it was for three lanes. So, you know, those are things that we, as residents, should not have to have to figure out. We should already know that ahead of time.
Candidate Elwood, once again, the question is, how would you improve the engagement of our residents in the decision-making process?
I believe that a large part of my platform is fostering community and community-focused governance, as I've said. Sure, building a park isn't going to engage residents in city council meetings necessarily, but as we identify, identify ourselves with the city of John's Creek, we will be more interested in the city issues and understanding where our property taxes go. I also think some basic civic education. When I'm canvassing, talking to voters, I inform them, there are six people in the city council, three seats are up, post two, four, and six, things like that. The voters really don't know because we're very busy.
Candidate Lefebvre, before you answer your second question, who would you like to rebut?
I'll go back this way. Candidate Yang.
And your question is, as you know, we have roughly 10% turnout rate for elections. How would you encourage the silent majority to vote on municipal issues most directly impacting their lives?
That is an excellent question, because during my canvassing, I'm meeting much of the silent majority. And it's through just talking to them, encouraging them to come out and vote. I also encourage them to show up to council meetings, and if they're not comfortable showing up and showing out, then email and get involved. There are groups like the John's Creek Community Association, where you can come alongside and work and learn what goes on in the city and how things work in the city. So it's important for our voters to understand, yes, we want you to come out, we want to hear from you, we want to hear from everybody. The silent majority has been silent too long, I'm afraid, and it's time for them to show up and vote. Thank you.
Candidate Yang, once again, the question is, as you know, we have roughly 10% turnout rate for elections. How would you encourage the silent majority to vote on municipal issues most directly impacting their lives?
I agree that we need outreach. We need to reach out to every individual possible. I think what people don't understand is our local elections impact us the most. It impacts our traffic, our development, our, you know, our work-life play, our quality of life, and people don't see that. I really want us, I go and meet people wherever and possible, and one of the things is knocking on doors, talking to people, having your friends talk about it. Tell them that voting is important.
And now we will begin with our closing statements in reverse order, so candidate Lefebvre, you have one minute.
Again, I would like to thank you all for being here this evening. Thank you, student leadership secretary, state ambassadors, another great job. It is a little odd to be on this side of it this time, but yeah, it was time to step up. And hopefully, that's what you see, is that I've had this experience in some way, shape, fashion, or form. I have probably already represented you in city issues. During the time with the JCCA, the district came up, and as a board, we decided that affected our entire membership and actually had to speak out against it. The way it came up, it was too much at once. We had to walk it back. So now, as we move forward, I know we're all afraid of change. We're inherently human, and that is something that happens, but change is always consistent. I think if we look forward and move forward and do forecasting, that's the best way for us to grow, and it's easier to accept change in those small, little steps. We're still a young city, and I see great vibrancy ahead in our future. Thank you.
And now candidate Yang.
Thank you again for such a great event and everyone here. I really am so amazed and really pleased to hear, to see everyone that's engaged. It is, like you said, there's only going to be 10% at most that may vote, and we want everyone to vote because your voice does count. You know, I am asking for your vote because I actually really, really care about the city, and I really want to represent you. I want to be that voice when, I want to be that voice when, when the vote comes up, or when a decision-making process is coming up for T-SLOSS, or when the decision-making process comes up for city manager. We have a city manager position that comes up in January. That's an important vote. He or she is going to decide our processes, our policies. We have important issues that are coming up that you, as a resident, need to have that voice and need to have that ability to be represented, and I think I will be that person that can do that for you.
And lastly, for post six, candidate Elwood.
All right. So I've lived in John's Creek for five years, as I started my introduction, and I hope to live here for the next 30 years. We moved here after having lived in Sandy Springs for 10 years, when I was pregnant with my son, and I would make the same decision again. The schools can't be beat, and we have the Chattahoochee River in our backyard, and that is a precious resource that other cities don't have. And I appreciate all of you for coming out here. I'm surprised by the turnout, and it's amazing. I know that this isn't necessarily the most conducive environment to really get deep into issues, so I would encourage all of you to go to my website, www.erin, E-R-I-N, for, forjohns creek dot com. And you can read more about me, my biography, my professional experience as an attorney. And I'm also going to be at a local coffee shop in the weekends between now and the election, and I'll be just sitting there. It's posted on my Facebook page with dates and times, and you can come by and talk to me, and we can go into greater depth about these issues. Thank you so much for your time.
First off, we have candidate Cooper.
Thank you, student leaders, secretary of state ambassadors. I hope you guys get tons of points for this because you all have earned it. Thank you. To all of you for coming out, thank you for taking the time, because you all are not part of that silent majority anymore. Because you're here, you're listening, and listening makes you no longer silent. So one thing I have, I have a lot of passion for what's going on in the city. I had somebody come up to me and say, you're the one who talks to city council, and you're the one who gets up there and tells them. And I'm like, yep. I'm the one who goes up and public comments and says, do something, move something, change something. It's one of those things. I believe in service. I believe we have to serve our communities, we have to serve our charities, we have to serve our children. And I also believe in leadership. It's time to step forward and lead. We cannot be a group of followers sitting on that city council. We're elected to lead. My website's Cooper for the Creek. I wish you a very good evening, and thank you for your vote.
Thank you for this evening. As you go home tonight, I encourage you to ask yourself three questions. Number one, among the candidates for post four, who will be the adult in the room? I told you I turned 40 before I turned four. More importantly, your Supreme Court in this state has two commissions, one on professionalism, one on continuing lawyer competency. I sit on both of those. The second question I would encourage you to ask yourself, who is committed always, with every decision, at every turn, to put your interests in front of theirs? I'll do that, and when needed, I'll shrink the shadows so others cannot hide. Number three, who has the skills, experience, knowledge, and passion to move this city forward? I humbly believe for post four, I'm that candidate, and I would be most honored to have your vote.
Next, we have Councilman Coughlin.
All right, well, thank you for coming out. I wanted to thank Principal Downey in Northview, Irene Sanders in Student Leadership John's Creek, Roger Wise, JCCA, city staff and council, you, the citizens, for holding us accountable. My wife, you know, I'm the public servant, but she does just as much servitude for the city, handling issues when I'm not at home. I'd like you to, also, I'm going to give a plug for my website as well. It's votecriscofflin.com/successes. I'd like you to go there and look at my record and just evaluate that, and if you like what I've done, then I appreciate your vote in the future. Also, I really wanted to answer all these questions and have, you know, three to five minutes on each one of them. So I encourage each and every one of you to call me. My personal number is 770-853-9409. You can call me or text me, and we can continue the conversation on any of the topics we discuss here tonight. So thank you.
Last for post four, we have candidate Thomas.
I too want to thank everybody for coming this evening. You know, they gave us this fancy pen up here that lights up, and I like at the bottom of it, says, develop, energize, and activate. I might change the last word if we're talking about city council. And I might say that last word should be implement, which is something that the city council has a very hard time of doing. We have a lot of data, a lot of people that spent a lot of time in a comprehensive plan to move this city forward. The time to do it is now, and so I am asking for your vote. You can visit my website, and my website is thomasforjohns creek dot com. You can also visit my Facebook page, Adam Thomas for John's Creek, and I do appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Now on to post two. First, we have candidate Mineke.
Put it simply, we live in John's Creek, the best city to live in in Georgia. I'm running to make the city even better than it is. Of all the candidates for post two, I have the deepest understanding of the city issues. For 10 years, I've been working and pushing on city council, making positive suggestions that they have received and has resulted in action by our council to make our city better. I have a long career in improving the performance organizations. Our city has a lot on its plate, and we need to improve the effectiveness of our city in getting our projects done on time, on budget, and to meet the expectations of our citizens.
Next, we have candidate Tunkey.
Thank you, Northview High School, Principal Downing, JCCA, and Irene Sanders, Student Leadership John's Creek, for hosting this event. Thank you, residents, for taking time to come to this debate. If I elected, I would like to focus on following. Bring businesses, bring jobs. Focus on those shopping centers that are going down. Just revive them, make them destination places. Also prioritize the office space in Tech Park, hundreds of thousands of square feet. Bring more jobs into John's Creek. Arts and culture, this is us. This is, this city is arts and culture, so in doing that one, let's go back and give John's Creek a unique identity and a brand. In the process, build an arts and culture and community center. Smoothen the traffic. If we need to move forward, we need to keep the projects moving forward, like the projects that are already approved in the pipeline, just expedite them and get it done. Again, thanks for having us here. I'm open for all the questions. Thank you.
And finally, we have candidate Weaver.
Thanks again for inviting us to enjoy this wonderful evening, appreciate everybody coming out. Like I said earlier, I am uniquely qualified for this position, and I think I am the best candidate. I've already served in this community for over 37 years, so I know what's going on out there in the streets. I know what's going on in the community, and I've served in that capacity for over 30 years. I helped build the department, police department, from the ground up, and now it's one of the best in the country. I will utilize those same skills set here on city council to try to make sure it's much more effective and efficient. My leadership, my professionalism, and my integrity is not matched by anyone up here on this board. My leadership, my professionalism, and my integrity is not matched by anyone up here on this podium. So I ask you for your vote to help me bring those same skill sets to the city council to make it what you want it to be, what this city wants it to be. It's already a great place to live and a safer city. Thank you.
Finally, we'd like to thank all of you guys for coming out here today and listening to the debate. Now, if we could have all the candidates please remain on the stage, and all state officials, please come onto the stage for a picture with the student ambassadors. Thank you all so much, and good night.